Go ahead and call the organizational council meeting to order, roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Grupzak.
Here.
Schmansky.
Again.
Schultz.
Here.
Lenzel.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Kuhn.
Here.
First on the agenda is a motion and a second for approval for reimbursement of the meeting.
So move. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve payment for the council for this meeting, roll call.
Peterson.
Yes.
Lenzel.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Schmansky.
Yes.
Grupzak.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Kuhn.
Next is committee appointments. Everybody got a list? Nothing really changed. There's one change on ways and means. Need a motion and a second to approve the committee appointments.
Move. Second.
Roll call vote.
Who's second now? Was it Tyler or was it? Schultz.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Grupzak.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Schmansky.
Yes.
Kuhn.
Yes.
Lenzel.
Yes.
Next is police committee appointment. I've got Ken Hilgers for three years, Don Reimer Sr. for two, and George Carlson for one.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second for the police committee appointments, roll call vote.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Kuhn.
Yes.
Lenzel.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Schmansky.
Yes.
Grupzak.
Next is selection of council president.
I was gonna say.
Any other nominations for council president? Any other nominations?
No.
Motion and a second to close the ballot.
So move.
Roll call vote for Brad for council president.
Kuhn.
Yes.
Lenzel.
Yes.
Schmansky.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Grupzak.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Schultz.
Next is selection of the depositories for the city. Need a motion and a second to approve the Coussport Edward State Bank, the Coussier Credit Union, and Paper City Savings as official city depository.
So move. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Coussport Edward State Bank, the Coussier Credit Union, Paper City Savings, roll call.
Peterson.
Yes.
Lenzel.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Schmansky.
Yes.
Grupzak.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Kuhn.
Yes.
Next they need a motion and a second to approve the city clerk as the agent for the Wisconsin Retirement Club for the city.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Next is motion and a second to approve the Tribune as official newspaper for the city.
So move. Second.
Motion and second, roll call vote.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Grupzak.
Yeah.
Lenzel.
Yeah.
Schmansky.
No.
Kuhn.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Next is border review. They're listed on there. The Larry, Terry, Bob Schultz, and Garrett would be the regulars for this year's. And the border review is set for May 17th from 4:30 to 6:30. It'll be on Tuesday. And be the open book will be from 2:30 to 4:30 before that. Need a motion and second to approve the border review members.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Board of Appeals. They're listed there. Herman is the chairman, Bob Burke calls it Dave Sonnenberg, Jerry Carlson, Ken Lindsmeyer, and Rod Bush. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is city attorney. Move that we, or request that we retain Attorney Jim Quinn as the city's attorney.
So move. Second.
There's a motion and second to approve Jim Quinn as the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the city prosecutor. Motion and second to approve Ashley Reimer as the city prosecutor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go with the library board. There were two terms that were up on the library board this year before Len Engler and Bonnie Young. Darla had given me a list of some people that were also interested in being on the board. I would like to recommend Jody O'Donnell and Lucy McGinley to take over those two positions on the board.
So replacing those two?
Yeah, we're replacing those two.
Who's, who's, who?
Jody O'Donnell and Lucy McGinley. We're replacing Len and Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Public Access Advisory Board. Recommend that Herman be appointed back to that position.
So move. Second.
There's a motion and second to approve Herman Stein for the Public Access Advisory Board. Public Access Advisory Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Airport Commission. Recommend that Brad continue in the Airport Commission for the city.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One other one that was brought up is the Weed Commissioner. Last year we appointed Assistant Public Works Director Terry Bancher to that position. Request that he be reappointed to that again.
So move.
Yeah, pretty good. Hang for me a minute.
What happened to us? We have one of these signs up here. What happened to that?
Not really sure.
Not really sure? I thought that was 29.
The motion and second was Schmansky, Hamilton for approve this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody else have anything come up? The other thing that's on the agenda is a discussion involving staffing in the Police Department. Sean.
Staffing. Thank you. Sounds like you said a stabbing in the Police Department.
That's why they're all here.
Sean and I had a conversation about three weeks ago about this issue. And then last night, or late yesterday afternoon, Terry and I met with Sean, reviewed his presentation that he's going to give us tonight. And out of our discussion, we really don't want a recommendation tonight as far as what we're going to do. This is a big step that needs to be discussed and needs to be thought out all the way through. So I'm just going to turn it over to Sean. He can do his presentation. Guys are here.
Okay, like the mayor said several weeks ago, him and, actually Terry did, to approach me about additional staffing for the Police Department. They're, you know, pretty in step and in tune with the activity and frequency of our activity as of late. So it was, you know, it's been something that has been a topic of discussion for quite some time in the Police Department. But I'll tell you, it was breath of fresh air for somebody else to come in and say, you know, boy, maybe you guys need a little bit more help. I'll just open with that. Additional staff and investigatory needs. Let me take you back 50 years, actually, by this chart. It shows calls for service. And this is everything from barking dog to anything you can think of that generates a number for dispatches, our calls for service, to the traffic stops and domestics and drug cases and everything. So this is, this is everything. And you can see since about 2008 that we've been hovering about, above and below the 3,000 calls for service a year, which is markedly different than just in the year 2000, which doesn't seem like all that long ago to me anyway. That's the 2015, 3,201 calls for service. That's the most the department's ever had. And that averages out to 267 calls for service a month. Few more statistics. Since 2001, the calls for service there, you see, that's a repeat from the previous graph. Under that in the gold are the arrests and citations. And for the most part, I think statistically, those have been fairly flat in the seven and eight hundreds in those recent years of high calls for service. And there the average is nearly 800 arrests and citations on average over the last eight So what does all that mean? That we're busier than ever? Patrol officer and the squad car needed here in the city because we're called upon often. So, and I'll explain this a little bit more in detail, when we're called away from the city to handle things, what impact that may have. And you add the heroin and methamphetamine epidemic to the record-setting calls for service, that just makes it all more important in my estimation. And elevated drug use naturally brings elevated property crime, thefts, burglaries. We had, I don't know the numbers, it was between eight and 12 guns stolen in the city this year, and I think one has been recovered. And that is, that has been about epidemic as the drugs across the county and probably everywhere that heroin and the drug problem is present. So far in April this month, what's today, 18th, 19th? We'll go through a few photos here. There's heroin. We seized about over $8,000 in cash. Hopefully we'll get to keep it. Heroin, meth. Heroin, a drug addict toolkit, tackle box, and more meth and paraphernalia along with it. That's just in April so far.
Is that from one bust or?
No, it's from probably at least four. And the marijuana cases, I think we've had three, and I don't think that they're, I didn't even put those pictures up here. So again, just to recap, the arrests and charges just to deal with drugs so far this month, 19 days. Two illegal prescriptions, two heroin cases, three other illegal drug cases, three marijuana, two meth cases, and seven items of drug paraphernalia.
Is that all in the city limits?
Yeah.
Wow. Sean, schedule one and two drugs, that's just classification?
Yeah.
Different types?
Yeah. The schedule is based on the addictive nature of the drug. And with heroin and meth comes overdose. And in 2015, we had three that we know of overdose cases in the city that were saved, that people lived. And that's thanks to good police work and good drugs. Probably heard of Narcan.
Yeah. You guys don't have that, right?
Well, we don't have it in the squads, but our ambulance is, you know, is right behind us. So what has happened in the past is the officer get there and start CPR, and the ambulance will come and deliver the Narcan. So in 2016, we've got one confirmed death from an overdose. And with the overdose deaths come a potential homicide investigation. And that's how it's being held, well, at least statewide, and all of the local agencies. And this is the trend of dealing with, somebody contributed to that person's death, though they may have taken drugs willingly, there is still an illegal act that took place by providing that person illegal drugs or substances. So you can imagine the magnitude of a small department handling a homicide case. We do the best we can. And I think we are doing the right things and could probably use some more training. But we got this case as far as it could go thus far, this overdose death, and we have more work to do on it. But we've always prided ourselves in the Coussier being able to handle our own business and our own cases. So why increase staffing? In my estimation, the best way to attack this busy problem is to add a patrol detective and a full-time detective that would bring a focused approach to investigations, somebody who is, that's what they do. They have specialized training and specialized schedule to be able to best attack some of the problems that we've seen. Reactive investigations such as property crimes, burglaries, overdose deaths, and that's not just drugs, it's all major cases that take a lot of time to conduct or have investigations on, can be more efficient if one person is focused on solving those cases and working them out. And proactive investigations, which are more targeted toward drug investigations, will be more, they can be more aggressive and more efficient based on scheduling and again, a focused approach. For example, recent search warrant and some of the drugs and paraphernalia from some of those slides were under the search warrant through a drug arrest and stolen firearms. But that, that was over 100 hours of manpower, man-hours. Overtime and extra time of mine and part-time hours as well. With the bulk of it is overtime. So you can see how time-consuming some of these things are. But it was sure rewarding as we served the search warrant at this house, the neighbors came out and thanked us, and even the days after. I just went through there yesterday, and one of the gentlemen came out and said, neighbors came out and said, well, who's next? Who we kicking out here next? So, you know, it's, there's a trade-off between how much time and resources can you put toward a problem and what is the community demand or expect of us. Interestingly, from 1980 through 1986, the department had a full-time investigator. And from my understanding, that was driven by a drug problem. Now coupled, many years later, calls for service have gone up 83% from that high number of 1984 to 2015. So just a bit of department trivia there. And so, you know, as I put this presentation together, I tried to look around and see what other departments are doing and their staffing levels. And it, sometimes it's, it's all over the place. Some departments our size have less full-time officers, some have more, some have seven, some have even eight. Some rung with a full-time staff and a lot of part-time officers for relief like we do and like Grand Rapids does. They have full-time staff and part-time relief. And in 2016, they moved one of their officers to a three-quarter time detective. And the goal there is to eventually go to full-time. So that part-time staff then works all her scheduled shifts when she's investigating. So basically, she works one day a week on the road and the rest of the time doing investigations. So I talked to her and I said, tell me about your caseloads. And she started doing this. And she chuckled and said she swamped and it's overwhelming. And while she does her necessary one day on the road, she oftentimes is still trying to work cases and get ahead of it. And what drives a lot of this is, you may look at our statistics and say, well, you don't have a lot of major cases. But what tends to happen, and this is what we've seen in the last couple of weeks and last month, is the more you dig, the more you find. And by being aggressive and rooting these people out, it's opened up three, four, five more leads, more cases, more confirmed drug houses in town. So it kind of, you open up a hornet's nest, which, you know, we want to stay on top of this problem and stay ahead of it and not be reactive to it. So big question is what, what would it cost to hire a full-time officer and make a full-time Just for examples, if it was the will of the council, and this is just for your processing, this is not a recommendation or a request. If it was the will of the council and they said, well, let's, yeah, let's hire somebody and get somebody full-time working investigations as quickly as June for the rest of the year, what would that cost? And that cost is just under $50,000. So with, with a 2% raise and for a full year, it'd be roughly somewhere between 101 and 104,000, because I didn't include overtime on this, and that's roughly 3,000 an officer a year. So that's a big chunk. And I don't know what the answer is there. I know Al has talked to John Traubman some, and that's some discussion that we can have. I don't know if you want to have that tonight or at a later time. But I think there are some options. I will say though, I would ask you to keep an open mind. In the same scope of the discussion that we've had with the school district and enhancement of our city, we want to make this a place where people want to be, want to move and want to come visit. We want to make it a destination. We look for beautification. We've been working hard at code enforcement last year, and I think that was shown very successful. This, this is a way I think the Police Department can proactively take this problem, you know, head-on and really focus on. Here's another option. Part-time wages, which would be a big challenge. If we were to do this aggressively as June and cover one man's hours with all part-time wages, it'd be roughly 28,000. And if we did it for a whole year, it would be roughly 47. Now, the challenge with part-time help and scheduling them over a long period of time is part-timers tend, especially the young ones, and we've worked hard to hire part-timers that we knew weren't going to leave traditionally at the Police Department. So hiring other officers from departments that they have a full-time job there, like Wisconsin Rapids or Port Edwards, they come and help us out, you know, on occasion, but we know that they're not, for the most part, going to leave. They're going to be around for a long time. And we, we've, we've tried hiring young officers with no experience and training them, which is, which is costly and is time-consuming, and it becomes a revolving door. And we see this a lot with other agencies that work part-time officers into their regular schedule. We hired three part-time officers probably in 2013, I think it was, or '14. Basically, they're, they're green right out of mid-state. We trained them all three, and none of them are here today. They've all moved on, which I can't blame them, you know? But that's the reality of part-time, part-time staff. So where do we go from here? Is there a need? I, I think there is. You know, we, we can only make judgments of our community on what we know, but we know there's so much out there that we don't know, this underworld that exists. I think that it's easy to justify that there's a need. And these days, that's probably in every community. We're no different. You know, this, this problem is nationwide. And what level of care do we feel is appropriate for our community? What level of expertise and personal service does the community want or deserve? Do we want to be proactive or reactive? And we've been pretty good about being proactive as patrol officers, you know? The whole presentation so far has shown what patrol officers have done, but there's only so much patrol officer can do. You know, they work days, specific days a week, and then they're off for two or three days. So the consistency is difficult. They're in a uniform and a marked patrol car. There's only so much surveillance and undercover type work you can do as a, as a marked uniform patrol officer. And then how, how would we get that accomplished? And those are the discussions I think we'll have probably in a month and in the, you know, the coming weeks. So I guess I would ask you to consider this presentation and kind of digest that for, for a while, kind of shake it out on priorities. And for sure, if you have any questions financially or activity, like what kind of activities go on in the Police Department, calls, those kinds of things, statistics, feel free to email or call anytime, and I'll, I'll answer any questions. Before I forget, this is a, I'll send this around. You can read this at the leisure. It's a, it's a patrol detective job description, which may help you shake out some more things about what, what this person might do.
Can this additional, some additional investigative work be coordinated between other area police agencies?
Some of it is, because a lot of times these people are almost transient. They'll get, you know, we just got some people kicked out of residents in town, and they're going to Grand Rapids, probably back where they came from. So we do communicate and coordinate a lot, unless you're talking about farming out investigations to another agency.
Well, that was my next question, yeah.
Some of those, some of those we have to because they're so specialized, like computer crimes. We just don't have the resources and manpower to stay up on that.
How does the state, how much is the state able to help a local Police Department?
I think there is some funding available for the multi-jurisdictional drug task force, but that covers like six counties. So that's, that's quite spread out. We do communicate with them. There's Rapids officers and Wood County officers. So they're helpful, but we can't always count on them to be here if we need them now.
Right.
And it's a priority, you know, their cases are priority as well.
I do have just one question.
Yeah.
For the experience qualification, education? The number two, basically, two years' experience as a patrol officer in the Coussier Police Department?
Yeah.
So.
Experience is a lot, of course, maybe.
Well, we have one officer that worked over a year for Monroe County, and he's been here a couple of years, so he'd get, you know, consideration.
Yeah, I just, he's kind of purposely written, not right or wrong, it seems, to pre-qualify certain people.
We don't, going into a full-blown discussion on this tonight?
No.
Well, I mean, we can have a little bit of a discussion on it tonight, but we're not going to be. Because I do have a lot of questions, but I think it's better kept for committee, my opinion. Well, and the reason that I ran this under tonight's meeting was because we're all here. Right. And it's a special meeting or something. That's why I had Sean put this.
And it's a special meeting or something, that's why I had Sean put this, I mean, we've talked about this presentation probably three, four weeks now, something like that. And, and then like you said, Terry and I met with him yesterday afternoon, went through this. Terry and I, like Sean said, Terry and I both contacted him and said, in our discussions with everything that's been going on, what kind of support does the department need from us? And that's where this whole thing kind of got rolling a little bit. And like Sean said, I have contacted John to see how the, how we sit with the budget. That's a whole big can of worms. I mean, you know what it's like in, in September and October where we're trying to work on the budget, and now all of a sudden, we're looking at trying to find another $100,000. So, Sean and I've talked about, there used to be some grant programs out there, they were called COPS grants, where the, the wages and benefits were split between the municipality and the state for three years, but then after that three-year period, the municipality had to keep that officer on and picked up the full balance of the wages. That's kind of been a little bit more specialized, Sean and I talked about that yesterday, the chance of getting a grant for strictly an investigator was probably pretty slim, so this is ultimately going to come all back on us and the taxpayers. I have had two phone calls on it, both of them were against this because of basically, again, it comes down to the tax rate, so.
Well, my opinion, small-minded people who don't realize the problem they may have could affect your tax rate and a lot of other stuff.
Very small people.
Invest in.
So, that's why we got this rolling a little bit. I'm sure we'll have more discussions, you can.
Next public safety.
Are you focusing on your public safety meetings and?
Well, it gives us a chance to look it over for a month, and everybody can come up with some questions, and I'm sure everybody at the table here has got them, and I'm sure the officers and ex-officers have questions and answers for some of us, so let's all think it over and maybe we can come up with some, which I think we, we should.
I ask to make it more efficient. If you have questions, you know, phone, see me or email me in advance, and maybe we can get some of that stuff answered, and I can send all that back to everybody before the meeting and.
Right.
Make it more efficient that way.
Just make sure you use the appropriate email.
Yeah, that's, we're going to bring that up too, we got to start using our city emails. So, mine is B dot Hamilton, yours is whatever, you know, first name, first initial, last name, at the Kusa, newkusaWI dot.
You guys have anything right now?
The only thing I could say is, part of what I do is, on my cell phone, I get the Crime Stoppers text tips in, and I probably get in on all that I forward, probably like five a week regarding drug activity in the city. I think if there's one week, I've probably got like 20 that I forward on, you know, so it is crazy. And then, something that's kind of big in a lot of the trainings and a lot of the conferences you go to now is officer wellness and just their mental, you know, wellness, and when you stick somebody on a cases like this that are trying to do patrol, get taken away on calls, and still try to work these investigations, it is wearing, you know, and working, can I come in because I need to work this case and work their days off and wearing on them too, where it can be, you know, just mentally, that's a huge concern of mine, you know, wearing us out, you know, working overtime and.
And not premium.
And, yeah, and having your family stay around, you know?
I, I think we, speak for everyone, we appreciate the job you guys have been doing to take care of the problem, you know, working this problem. It means a big deal to me to eradicate this as much as possible. Are there things that citizens can do to help, not, I mean, not going after people, things to look for, this type of act, you know, we don't need Charles Price going around to probably cause you to get in more trouble. Things to look for, you know?
Some of that stuff, just communication, if they think that they see something that is out of order or, I mean, most people know what drug activity these days is, you know, don't be afraid to call, don't let it go. Any information's, you know, good to start out with and we can wade through it.
Basically, this, this concept is, is two ideas. One is, do we want a patrol investigator, and if so, are we going to support it with another full-time officer or are we going to go with a part-time officer? That's basically the two things we need to focus on and then focus on how funded, so. I mean, I know, well, like what you said, Josh, you're getting in the middle of a, of traffic stop and all of a sudden, you've got to go off and do something else or some kind of other complaint you're in the middle of, and you got to, you're trying to do an investigation and you get called for a barking dog at the other end of town, and it kind of disrupts the whole process.
Well, just like the, the one death we had, you know, we considered homicide investigation, and really that's, you know, in a small town, we take pride in taking care of our own investigations and trying to be the best we can, and then, you know, you're really working hard at that and all of a sudden, ah, barking dog, you go away and then chuck, and then it's your mind thought processes, that homicide investigation, no matter where you go to, is your, are you the right mindset for the call that you're going to, you know, because in the back of your mind, you're thinking, you want to get that taken care of.
As your liaison officer, Josh, you mentioned before about getting all those tips and texts and stuff.
Yeah.
Without going into a number, maybe even a percentage, how much of that's directed from the school?
Like none, that's all just in.
Just yourself, so it's looking good at the school as far as that goes, I mean?
Yeah, we do, you know, this is probably the best year I've had for drugs in school. We bring a dog, canine in two, three times a year, and it hasn't, we haven't had any hits this year. I did get marijuana a car last, yesterday, but that was like the only, well, I guess two this year, I think, two cases of marijuana, I think, in the schools, so I mean, it's still there, but.
It's just stuck in the right direction.
Yeah.
There was one, there was one year that we bought drugs over there, it's when they had the smoking area, and the day after graduation, we couldn't buy drugs at the school in a smoking area. That was once, otherwise, the whole year, we were buying drugs here and stuff. And the reason we did, that's why I worked it, we had to have help because we didn't have the finances, the city didn't, and city fathers at that time didn't think it was necessary. They said, "But you get one, you're going to have more anyway coming, so what's the difference?" You know, so, that's why this whole thing ended to what it did, is just through putting your head in the sand, is basically what it is. There's a big problem, somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's going to get killed in this city, because this drug problem is very big in, in the city of Kusa, very big.
We've only scratched the top. This homicide investigation I'm working from Wood Avenue is, it's out of control.
Yep.
It's coming, it's coming into Rapids and its spider living out to all outside communities, including our own, and it's getting worse by the day, and unless we do something now to shut it down, it's going to get worse.
Yep.
It's going to come into your homes, it's going to be involved in your families.
You can have all the locks in the world, and these drugers are going to take and be in your house, whether you're there or not, that's how somebody's going to get hurt.
People that are against us because of financial reasons, can we, can we show them that overtime is going to be cut somewhat by the addition of a full-time investigative officer approximately percentage-wise?
That's a good use of math, but the majority of those 100 hours on that one case would probably be cut by 75%, I bet.
Yeah, yeah. People need to know that, that's significant.
When I worked with the, doing investigations, I was bonded through the, I was also a deputy sheriff. I was deped by, through Bob Bowden at that time, was the sheriff, and that way, I could take and travel within the county and still be covered. The city did pay my wages, the city also paid my bonding, and the bonding was through the insurance, Schultz Insurance Agency.
That was a crooked organization.
Your premiums due.
It's overdue.
The city paid it all, and it made it a lot easier. It did a lot of backup for the State Department of Justice. We, a lot of drugs coming into town, we even had a kid working on us, the street department that was dealing, dealing drugs, marijuana and acid, and we finally got here, we sold it to a undercover state agent. But there again, we didn't have the funds to take and do the buying and stuff like this, or, so we had to involve these other people, so we basically did backup on a lot of it, and, but it's, it's, you just don't believe, you can't understand unless you're in it exactly what that underground is up to.
Yeah.
You've got to take it and trust some of these people, the calling people, but if you don't, you're not going to get anywhere.
I'll just tell you guys, I, I support, I give up a lot to get this problem out here. My cousin was murdered because of drugs, I've got family members that were on drugs. I don't want it to hit my family, I don't want it to hit anybody else's, so whatever I can do to support it, I would.
I got relatives too that are on drugs.
I don't want anyone to go through that.
Hurts me.
No sympathy, empathy for dealers here. Good thing you guys have laws to hold back because of that.
No sympathy.
Well, hopefully, I mean, that was part of the reason that I had this video tonight, so it was, so this presentation gets out there, and I know a lot of people watch these meetings, and hopefully, this will be linked through our website too, so that the, once it's off production on the PAC channel, we could still have it on our website so people could see this. So, the more information that we can get out to the public, hopefully, the more support that you guys can get, that we can get, so we can figure out how to get this resolved and out of town, so. And not only just out of town, but out of the area. Getting it out of here isn't going to do any good if it's still heavy up in Rapids and Grand Rapids and Port, wherever. We've got to get everybody together and hammer this, and I'm, I'm sure the other departments are too, but it's, it's going to take a group effort to get this out of here.
Incidentally, on, on that point, Brian Mahan and I went just this last week, Wood County has started a heroin and methamphetamine drug task force, and so we're a part of that group and trying to use all the resources of treatment to law enforcement, to the court system, all the elements that impact this problem, to take a proactive approach and try to get this thing under control. And I know, I believe it was at Rapids, they're, you know, into it pretty deep in their case, so they hired a, just another full-time drug investigator.
Yeah, they got a real problem there, I mean, obviously, we do too.
But all that's going to do is they're going to just push to here, because that's what's going on, is they're, you know, pushing to here. And it's always been here, I think back when, you know, when I started here in the Kusa in 2005, I was getting a ton of drug arrests, but it was a lot easier back, you know, laws have changed, you arrest somebody, search into arrest, you'd find, you could get their whole car and get a lot of drugs out of that way, and now it has changed, if it ain't to what you're arresting them for, you don't get to search the car, you know, and there's constitution stuff we got to follow, it's not like we can, this stuff takes time. We just look at doing one house, probably take a minimum of probably six weeks just to, you know, get enough on the one case.
I think it's a good start here with the presentation and everything, but it's going to take, my opinion, is to get the citizens to become aware enough of this, you know, to be proactive on it, and, because I, I would love to have somebody come up to me and say, "I think we should be hiring another guy," you know? That would make it so much easier sitting back here, if you knew you had some people out there that were, that were thinking on the same line as most people. They finally wake up and realize just how bad it is.
That was one of the golden points that I had, what's, what's our dedication and what's their expectation of this? You know, that, that finding that balance is that's the right thing to do.
But if we can get, if we can get people, get this out to people enough that we start getting, I want phone calls, I want somebody, you know, yesterday or whatever, so we can kind of get a measure on what people are thinking.
Email, whatever.
Yeah, any of them. I mean, I think that goes a long ways in the decision process.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Thanks, Sean. Thanks, guys, for what you're doing out there.
Fantastic job so far.
See, we can work on this. Anybody have anything else?
Most of them are done.
All of them?
All right.
Both?
I want to even.